Good evening and welcome to the Newman City Council Regular Meeting, December 10, 2024. Let's please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let me say good evening to all of you and all that are watching simulcast. This is a great, great evening because my Lord and Savior Jesus Christ and God Almighty says, "When two of war gathered, he's in our presence." So we thank you, Father God, for being in our presence. Before I pray to or ask to pray, I picked a scripture that I'm going to, as one of the city councilmen that are going to be leaving, I picked a scripture that I would love to pass along to all of you, especially the residents of the city of Newman. And this here scripture comes from the book of Chronicle, Second Chronicle at that, 7th Chapter 14 verse, and it says, "If my people who are called by my name will humble themselves and pray and seek my face and turn from their wicked ways, then I will hear from heaven and I will forgive their sins and will heal their land." And the reason why I brought that is because we're having a difficult year come 2025. We have disasters across this country in terms of people losing their homes, their lifestyles. And I said it to say this for all of you who are Christians or religious people, read your Bible and pray that God keeps his hands over us. We are a great country. We've been very blessed, but fortunate that we had disasters that have plagued this, this country. And please, if you're a Christian, read your Bible and come with the word and seek God's name. Father God, we just thank you so much for this evening that you have blessed us. We thank you for being in our presence. Father God, we just thank you so much for every person that has walked through the doors of this chamber. And Father God, for those new elected officials that are going to be representing the city of Newman, I pray that you would keep your covenant with them and their families. Bless them in a mighty way, Father God, that they will bring a spirit to this council and bring a spirit to the city of Newman. And as we prepare to take care of business for the city of Newman this evening, Father God, we thank you for your presence and we pray all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Councilman McDonald. Roll call.
Councilmember McDonald.
Here.
Mayor Portem Ball.
Here.
Councilmember Tomlinson.
Here.
Mayor Graham.
Here.
Item number five, report on canvas of the vote. A, adopt resolution 2024, next number, declaring the results of the municipal election held on November 5, 2024.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. The Stanislaus County Register of Voters has completed its canvas of the election results from the November 5, 2024 consolidated election. The city has received the statement of results and the certification of said election results. Based on the official election results, Casey Graham was reelected to the office of mayor for a two-year term to expire in November of 2026. Gisele Pimantel and Matthew Harden were each elected to the office of city council member and will serve full four-year terms expiring in November of 2028. And Mary Moore was reelected to the office of treasurer and will serve a four-year term will expire in November of '28. The vote totals can be found on the attached resolution of the staff report and the corresponding report from the county. Staff recommends that the city council adopt the resolution 2024, next of number, a resolution declaring the municipal election, the results of the municipal election held on November 5, 2024, and direct the city attorney to administer the oath of office to the newly elected or reelected officials.
I'll bring you back to council for action.
Move we adopt resident number 2024, declaring the results of the municipal election held on November 5, 2024.
And I'll second that.
Yeah, first and second, go and vote electronic. Motion carries for zero. The election has been adopted. Before we, next, we're going to do the oath of office for the newly elected council members, treasurer, and myself as mayor. Before we do that, we'd like to thank Councilman McDonald. Roy, you've, you've been here a long time. You've been a great asset to the community and we, I love all your prayers that you do for us. I miss those and your dedication to the city and your hard work. So with that, we want to come down front.
We'd like for you to do this memorial of your time of service with this evening.
It's going to mean a lot and I truly appreciate it. And for the eight years that I've spent here, it's been blessed. And not only being a city councilman, but let me say this, I've worked for the school district and many of you in here probably know that my wife works for the district herself with some kids up there from high school and going all the way up to high school and something. But I want to say that the two elected officials, Phil and Arnold, have a task. The main council is something, but the key to it is that you yourself be an asset for the city. And all the people that you're going to be representing, I know you won't have the chance to get to know them, but they will know you by the work that you do. And for the eight years that I've spent doing this work, it's been a blessing too. When I first come here in terms of city council, there's quite a few things that we tried to accomplish and we basically didn't accomplish. For those eight years I've been here, we've moved, and I don't know if you know this, but I've been preaching that we are the number one city on the west side. That means all the big cities that are surrounded us, we're the number one city. I say that to say that for the new elected district, we have a task, but make sure to keep us number one. Congratulations.
So with that, we'll call up Ms. Moore, Mr. Harding, and Ms. Pimantel, and we'll go ahead and do our swearing in.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't.
Well, maybe.
Congratulations, everyone. So if you could repeat after me. There's your right hand. I state your name.
I.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Thank you.
Mr. Harding and Ms. Pimantel, you don't get away that easy. You got to start working your way on up here. Time to get to work.
So what we're going to do now, we have to change some things in the computer system real quick for the electronic voting, and we got to change a couple of things, but we're going to take about a five to 10 minute breaks. There's cookies and waters on the back table so you can mingle with your families and, and talk for everybody that came here to see you guys. And then we'll re, come back to the meeting in about five to 10 minutes. Great.
Healthcare clinic and every day I'm meeting families that are having a hard time making ends meet. And something that really simple that can be done. Right now Newman residents are paying three to four times more for electricity than people in Patterson and we're in the same county. They just have TID versus PG&E. I've called our congressman, they mentioned that PG&E is raising the rates higher than more often than anywhere else in the nation. But I don't find this acceptable and I was wondering if anybody else would be willing to join me in confronting this.
Well, I appreciate you speaking. I agree with you 100%. They do keep raising the rates and it's not right. California has actually allowed them to do that. The Public Utilities Commission has allowed them to do that and that's a huge problem. And the problem is they own the city here, right? The contract?
Yeah, so back in the prior to my being a part of the city, TID actually came out to the west side and there was a big fight between PG&E and TID of which of how much utility services that we provided and they were only allowed to go to Crow's Landing North, they weren't allowed to come into Newman. PG&E held on to that. So and that was something that the PUC agreed with. So but Mr. Smith, if you if you'd like, you can reach out to me via email and then I'll make contact with you and we'll see if we can join forces here to maybe work with our congressman or local elected. I know Assemblymember Allen East might be a part of that as well. And see what we can do to provide some relief to our residents. And we were just looking at ours and over the last five years, we've had over 100% increase to our to our energy costs just to pump water to our residents. And so, you know, that that cost alone just to pump water to our residents, $50,000 a month. So it's, we understand your position. So if again, if you want to shoot me an email through our website, I'll be more than happy to coordinate with you.
Well, we'll do. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Sir?
Welcome.
My name is George Martinez. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Congratulations to all the newly elected city council members. I wanted to help the city begin planning for the next year and I'd like to make some suggestions if possible. As Mr. McDonald said, there's a lot of people not doing well and they need somewhere to go to share some of their angst and get just sort of offload a little bit. I'd like to ask for permission or whatever I got to do to use a silly facility to hold emotion anonymous meetings. These meetings operate on the same basis foundation as AA. I've talked about this with several other people. I'm not sure how they feel because I haven't got any feedback. And that's another one of my concerns is that over the last eight years, I sent Mr. McDonald two letters that I just spoke to him. He said he never received. And I ran in our dialogue, it came up that if they don't call us back, we don't have representation. So city council members who just got elected should be aware that when we call, we'd like to get a response. So I'm suggesting that the city develop a rotation plan where the messages just don't go to a general box, but are delivered to the person that we're intended to for and that somehow between a certain amount of time, they get back to us. In the last two months, I've tried to contact the newly elected city council member, Giselle, and the mayor, and I've not received a phone call or any response from either one of them. I think that's a concern because like Mr. McDonald said, without, if they don't call us back, we don't have representation. My final suggestion is that the city of Newman organize a city police academy whereby the city, the police or the sheriff's department, experienced staff members within the police department, offer classes to the citizens about how the police operate, policing policies, why they're important, and why it's important that the community be aware of what these are. I believe it will have several positive results. One of them is that the people will feel more confident about their police department. They'll get to meet some of the police officers and they'll they'll not be as hesitant to interact with the police officer in a mutually beneficial dialogue. And thank you very much for the opportunity. Once again, my name is George Martinez. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, council and new council members. My name is Justin Farkas. I am a representative for the assemblyman of the area, Assemblyman Juan Alaniz. First and foremost, from our office, we really just want to congratulate Mr. Harden, Ms. Pimentel on your hard fought election and the work that you will be putting in here in the future for the citizens of Newman here. We love coming out to the city. I'm one of the few regulars at these meetings, come about once a month and really love, one, how fast these meetings go compared to all the others that I go to, but also just the very obvious dedication that all the members of the council have to the community. So we really look forward to working with you both on some of the things that we have coming up in the following session. So going into it first, obviously, Assemblyman Alaniz was reelected as well. We're going to be serving the community for another two years in the state legislature and we are incredibly humbled by the support that we've received in the last election. We've hit the ground running, so we've already introduced our first two bills of the year, both of those referring to a very important issue that we saw with this election, and that is the transparency and speed at which we count ballots here in the state of California. So the first bill that we introduced, Assembly Bill 16, will require counties to begin counting ballots on the day that mail-in ballots are received by the voters. Right now, that is not the case. They can begin processing them and I don't know exactly when they can start counting, but this will require them to begin counting ballots as they receive them on 29 days before the election. So when people receive their ballots in the mail. It's going to be really great, especially when you see elections happening right here in our area, like with Congressman Duarte, who unfortunately lost his race, but came down literally to the last day, December 3rd, when the ballots or the canvas of the vote had to be completed and certified by that December 3rd day. It's an injustice, quite frankly, to the people who voted and who are, you know, looking to find out who their representatives will be going into the next year. The second is Assembly Bill 17, it's a little bit more nuanced. It refers to precinct maps and public accessibility to those precinct maps. Right now, typically, depending on the county, I know in St. Oslo County for sure, they're not publicly accessible and you have to pay for that information. This would allow for the public to view and access those precinct maps election to election, just helping establish some more transparency in our system. We also have co-authored a couple of bills, Assembly Bill 38, which 38, which was authored by Assemblyman Lackey, another former law enforcement member of the state legislature. This bill will make the rape of a developing disabled person a felony in the state of California because that's not the case right now. I'm sure you guys know about some of the sexual violence work that we have done over the last two years. We're continuing to build on that. This is another instance of how victims are being left behind by the current system in California and how we can bring victims justice. Finally, in response to last month's meeting, I know you guys brought up some concerns with CARB, the California Air Resources Board, and a vote that they took on November 11th regarding low carbon fuel standards and the strengthening of the regulations that they're bringing. We are actually co-authoring a bill with a gentleman named Greg Wallace, Assemblyman from Palm Springs, who is bringing legislation that will roll back the LCFS regulations entirely from that November 11th vote. For those of you who weren't aware of this, this was happened immediately after the election and it's projected to raise gas prices by another potentially 65 cents per gallon on top of the dollar and 20 cents a gallon that we pay in taxes and all the other costs that come with pumping gas into your vehicles. So focused on a lot of things, for better or for worse, depending on how you look at it, there is a cap. The cap of bills that we can introduce, year to session to session has changed. Last session, it was 50, it's been brought down to 35. I think overall, that's a net win for the people of California, just because less, there's, we can start focusing more on the real issues, bringing ideas together and flesh it out versus just, you know, 50 bills from 120 different members of the legislature, not very efficient work. So we're working on that. If you guys have any questions, we have until February 21st, or ideas, we have until February 21st to introduce legislation. So please bring those to me if you can. Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. We appreciate you being here. Anybody else wishing to speak from the public? All right. Not saying anymore, we'll move on to item number nine, consent counter. A, waive all readings of ordinance and resolution except by title. B, approval of warrants. C, approval of minutes of the November 12th, 2024 meeting. D, adopt resolution 2024 next to number, a resolution to initiate a proceeding to vacate and abandon a section of the unnamed right of way 180, 180 feet north of Scott Road.
Move to accept the consent counter.
We have a first, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a first and a second. Go and vote electronically. Motion carries five zero. I am 10 public hearings or none tonight. I am number 11. A, second reading and adoption of ordinance 2024, next number, an ordinance amending title 11 Public Ways and Property, Section 11.05.040 of the Newman City Code, Setting Water Rates, Fees, and Related Service Changes Effective January 9, 2025, and Authorizing the Staff to Publish a Summary of Said Ordinance.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. The item before you is an ordinance to increase our water rates. The city of Newman Water Fund does not set its rates due to the influence of investors or stockholders. The rate increase is driven solely by the increase in our operating costs, maintenance, and capital replacement. In order to increase utility rates, California cities have to proceed through a Prop 218 process. This process was designed to make cities justify their utility costs increases and to give the public a chance to voice their opinion. So first, in September of this year, we adopted a water rate study that looked at our present and future costs. This study took a sober look at our operation and justified the rates that need to be changed or charged. These proposed rates make sure our water fund remains solvent. Secondly, the city went through the Prop 218 protest vote process, notifying all of our residents and property owners of the rate change. It also provided them the opportunity to comment and vote to protest the adoption of the rates. The number of protest votes received was insufficient to prevent the increase. So next, the city introduced the ordinance at our previous meeting. And then finally tonight, the council will vote on its adoption. Should the council vote to adopt the ordinance, the new water rates will become effective January 9th, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions? No? I'll go and open up the public for any comments or questions.
Did they decide anything on a senior citizen low income?
We did. That's our, that's on the agenda for B. We did. Yes, ma'am. All right, I'll bring it back to council for action.
Move to approve second reading and adoption of ordinance number 2024, an ordinance amending Title 11 Public Ways and Property, Section 11.05.040 of the Newman City Code, Setting Water Rates, Fees, and Related Service Charges Effective January 9, 25, and Authorizing Staff to Publish a Summary of Said Ordinance.
Second.
Second, go and vote electronically. Motion carries five zero. Item B, adopt resolution 2024, next number, resolution rescinding city of Newman Resolution 2018 through 21, and implementing a low-income utility rate subsidy.
Evening, Mayor. As Mary had mentioned, we were asked by the council at our previous meeting to come up with a plan for a low-income subsidy. Currently, on our city books, we have a subsidy for just the sewer. So in this particular ordinance, we're going to be rescinding that one and putting in this new plan, which will include sewer, water, and garbage. It's a 20% decrease. People would have to demonstrate that they are low-income in their households, either through providing their tax returns or if they are a recipient of any of the programs that are listed, and there's several. The number of programs and the programs that are listed on there follow PG&E's care guide. So we're using the same way to help determine if they are a low-income family. We estimate this will have a little over a $3,400 impact, which would be covered out of our general fund, which is a negligible charge to assist our low-income residents.
I'll run up to the public. Go on. Sebastian, yeah, you gotta go up there. Sorry, Mary.
People at home can hear you.
Yeah.
Hello, my name is Sebastian Rangel. My question is, are you going to have that rate for disabled people too? That are like on a set social security income?
Yeah, so it's based on your income. So we couldn't make it based on age or whether they're disabled, but it's based on income because that's the one thing that would, that's impacted most by the rate change.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Anybody else? All right.
So Luke, where can they find that information to look at that to see if someone qualifies?
So one, it's in our agendas for now that you can look at it there, but we'll have it available on our website once it's approved, so that they'll be able to look and see if they qualify for it. We'll also put together a form to help them be able to get through the process to get set up.
Thank you.
All right, I'll bring it back to council for action.
Move we adopt 11, item 11B, adopt resolution number 2024, resolution rescinding city of Newman Resolution 2018, 21, and implementing a low-income utility rate subsidy.
We have a first, a second. We have a second. Go and vote electronically. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Lou. Item number C, adopt resolution 2024, next number, a resolution receiving and accepting the General Purpose Financial Statement and Transportation Development Act audits for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2024.
That's me again. So just for you new council members, I normally don't talk this much. It just happens to be that time of year where everything comes up at once. But in this one, this is our annual audit. So this happens every single year. We have an audit firm. Currently, it's O'Connor Company. We've been with them for several years now. Started back in June, they request a ton of data from us. We send them a lot of files. They'll do what we call a pop quiz, is they'll randomly select checks that we've written and we have to provide them proof of backup of why we cut those checks, showing that there's signatures on the invoices and on the checks themselves. They go through our payroll, they make sure everything reconciles, and it takes them six months to get to this point because there's just a lot of data they go through. Anyway, Michael O'Connor from O'Connor Company is here tonight to present the findings of the audit.
Welcome, Michael.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. I'm here to present the financial statements for the year ended June 30, 24, for the city of Newman. On those financial statements, on page one through three is our independent auditor's report. The, there were no, everything was done in accordance with regulations and standards, professional standards, and there were no modifications. This is what's called an unmodified opinion. And that's the best you can receive. There's many different types of opinions, but this is the best you can receive. When it is finalized, after your approval, it will be on our letterhead. If you ever have questions for me or anybody at the firm I work for, feel free, our contact information will be on the letterhead and you can contact us at any time. On page 15 of the financial statements, I don't know if you have copies of them. This is a snapshot of June 30, 24, of your statement of net position. It's on the full accrual basis, like you're a for-profit company. And I just want to point out at the bottom of it, you have your governmental activities and business-type activities. Your business-type activities are your water and sewer. Governmental activities are all your other programs, particularly the general fund. In your governmental activities, you have basically close to $40 million in net position, that is your assets less your liabilities. And in your business-type activities, you have $28 million approximately there, or a total of almost $68 million in net position for the city. Next, I'd like you to turn to the next page, 16. This is your statement of activities. It shows all the activities for the year, all your revenues, money coming in and expenses going out, the summary of all of them. It starts out with expenditures on the left because governments are in the business of providing services. They're not, they're not in the, in the business of making a profit, but to provide services for the community, and those are the costs of the services. And as you move across, you have grants and charges for services that brings what's left over of the expenses, which are then subsidized by the taxpayers. The third line from the bottom, governmental activities, you had over $10 million increase. City received a lot of grants this year that were mostly used for capital projects. Business-type activities, you have $2.5 million of revenues exceeding expenditures. Next, I'd like you to turn to page 17. These are your governmental funds, and this is the balance sheet. This is on what's called a modified accrual basis, almost like a cash basis. And you see different funds used for different purposes. And I just want to go, you know, across the bottom there, you have almost $4 million in your general fund. The second line from the bottom, CDBG, you have $5 million, almost $5 million in your public facility improvement. State grants fund actually has a deficit of almost $2 million. The federal grants fund has, has a surplus there of just over $1 million. Then you have non-major funds, or all your other small funds grouped together, and then you have $6.5 million in fund balance in those funds. I would like you to then turn to page 19. Feel free to interrupt with questions at any time. So 19 is your summary of revenue and expenditures for the year for all these funds on what on a modified accrual basis, almost like a cash basis. And then the third line from the bottom there says net change in fund balances. You have expenditures exceeding revenues for a general fund there of almost $400,000. CDBG, public facilities have revenues exceeding expenditures. State grant funds had a loss there of almost $900,000, and same with your federal grants, $400,000. And then you had a surplus there in your non-major fund of $1.3 million. Behind these statements are a bunch of notes to the financial statements that give you more information about the city's policies, their accounting policies, about their capital assets, about their debt, about your pension plan, a lot more information. I'm not going to go into that, but that's all I wanted to present tonight. So if you have any questions, I mean.
Any questions from the council? No? All right, I'll bring you back to council for action.
Move to adopt resolution number 2024, a resolution receiving and accepting the General Purpose Financial Statement and Transportation Development Act audits for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2024.
First, do we have a second? Second. First, second, go and vote electronically. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Mr. Connor. We appreciate it.
Thank you. My pleasure. I also want to thank Lou Humphreys and his staff, who have worked really hard to make the audit run efficiency, efficiently, and also to keep their accounting records in good order.
Standing. Thank you. And thank you, Lou, for doing, always done a good job. Item number D, second reading and adoption of ordinance 2024, next number, an ordinance approving the Matos Ranch subdivision phase two development agreement and authorizing staff to publish a summary of said ordinance.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is again, the second reading for the ordinance. Originally, this project is Matos Ranch subdivision phase two. It went to our planning commission back in May of 2024. They approved a zone change and a recommended approval of a zone change general plan amendment that were subsequently approved by this council. Ultimately, the subdivision map was approved. Matos Ranch Phase Two is a 6.2 acre subdivision immediately east of the Matos Ranch One. That is the project that you see on the south side of Prince Road, on the, on the east side there where there's new construction going on. This next phase would be again, east on the highway side of this. 6.2 acres would go, be subdivided into 42 lots. As part of that, there would be a half acre lot. As part of that half acre lot, there, we're going to put and install two pickleball courts that would go in as part of that development on there. The other main contributing factor on this one as well is Matos Ranch, or Matos Road, which is the road that leads into the subdivision, would be extended all the way out to the highway. And that would give people living on the south side of town with another access point to the highway instead of having to come all the way up the Enyo and then go backtrack in or go down Sanchez and come up Prince. You would then be able to come in through a new intersection there. And then subsequently, and it'll come back later because it's going to the planning commission in early 25, there's a 10-acre shopping center that's going to go there as well. So it's a big shopping center and that's going to go to the planning commission in early 25 for their review and ultimately approval. Hopefully, if not, then we'll see it here. So why do we do a development agreement? A development is an agreement between the city and the developer that extends the life of their project in this uncertain economy and the high interest rates. You never know what's going to happen in terms of the residential market. In this particular case, instead of four-year life, they're going to get a seven-year life out of that. But that also allows the city to collect some supplemental fees. And in lieu of that, and those fees, as you see, were part of Exhibit C. And one of that fees is called a community benefit fee. We've been collecting this for a while now. And so what it is, is the developers pay a community benefit fee of $4,500. That's $4,500 per lot. That goes into a kitty and then the council can utilize that money for special projects. One special project that the council talked about is a veterans plaza, right here at the corner of, of the plaza here, on the, on the grassy knoll. Redesign that to put in a veterans honorary there as well. So they've agreed to pay that $4,500 per lot, again, for the council can use towards special projects. And the theory behind it is, is our taxpayers and residents have been contributing property taxes a lot of time to our community, and that's kind of their buy-in to, to our community by putting that forward. So with that is our recommendation that the council adopt ordinance number 2024, an ordinance approving the Matos Ranch subdivision phase two development agreement and authorize staff to publish a summary of said ordinance. And I can answer any questions anyone may have.
Questions? No? I'll bring it back to council.
A motion, second reading and adoption of ordinance number 2024, an ordinance approving the Matos Ranch subdivision phase two development agreement and authorizing staff to publish a summary of said ordinance. And I can answer any questions anyone may have.
Questions? No? I'll bring it back to council.
A motion, second reading and adoption of ordinance number 2024, an ordinance approving the Matos Ranch subdivision phase two development agreement and authorizing staff to publish a summary of said ordinance. First, do we have a second?
A second.
Vote electronically. Thank you, guys. Items from city staff and manager, or city manager, Michael.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to first welcome Councilmember Pimentel and Councilmember Harden, looking forward to working with you over the next four years. Well, or the next time. I don't know that I'll be here the full four years, but I look forward to working with you. Mayor, congratulations as well, Ms. Mary Moore. Thank you for stepping up and taking care of that treasury role for us, it's an important role. Just some real quick housekeeping. For the Christmas break, City Hall will close, starting to close the business of the 20, Monday, the 23rd of December. City Hall will be closed and from the 24th all the way through January 1st, and we'll reopen on January 2nd. Because the, and by tradition, we, we will cancel the next council meeting unless you want to come out on Christmas Eve. But our next council meeting will be January 14th. So as everyone knows, we meet on the second and fourth Tuesdays of the month. I'd like to really thank the public work staff. really thank the Public Works staff, Perfecto Milan, Joanna, Ally, the Chamber of Commerce for the Christmas tree lighting ceremony. They've done a great job on the plaza this year, and it looks outstanding over there. If you got to go to the Christmas tree lighting event, it was a really, it was a really great event. And they put a lot of energy into that. We spent a lot of time on our downtown, and the Public Works, I think, did a tremendous job this year of setting that up, and I just want to thank them for that. Also, and with that, again, I want to thank Lou and his team for the financial report. This is, I can't even count how many years we've gotten the most highest rating from our independent auditors. And it keeps all of our books in order, and so thank you, Lou, for doing that. It's a real treat to have a financial team that takes, that takes care of your, of your dollars. And, you know, if you take care of your pennies, your dollars take care of themselves, so I remember that if you're young guys. And I don't know that he's still here, but, you know, a big thank you to Councilmember McDonald. He's been with us, he was with us for eight years. And what he brought to the team was, you know, a lot of times, we look at the city, we focus a lot on infrastructure projects, but he was on the, on the, on the social and the human side of the council. And, you know, we've really expanded our Christmas tree lighting ceremony, and we have farmers markets events and all that stuff. And he was a lot of the impetus behind that. He really, he really believed in the social part of the community, and we really are going to miss him. His, his contribution will be felt for a long time, and so... And just lastly, I just want to wish the council a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Ally?
Good evening, Mayor, council members and community. I'd like to thank everybody for our Christmas tree lighting. I know Michael hit the nail on the head with that. Our mayor for being out there, and our whole community, Public Works for being a part of it, our small businesses, and everybody that was just involved in our Christmas tree lighting. Apart from that, we are starting our basketball season. I'd like to thank the school for allowing us to use their facilities, Yolo Hunt and OHS. So you'll see a whole bunch of basketball players here in the near future going out there, referees out here in our audience as well. We also have Kajukimbo every Thursday night at six PM if anybody's interested in it. And we have adult men's basketball every Friday from six to nine and every Sunday from six to nine at Yolo Gym. It's free to the community, anybody that's interested in participating can contact me or just go to the location on those dates. With that, I can answer any questions that y'all may have.
Any questions? No?
Thank you.
Evening, Mayor, council members. Congratulations to the new council members. I look forward to working with you for the next year and a half or so, until I retire. I think I'm the first one out. We received a OTS grant a while back, council was aware of for a new radar trailer. We did receive that trailer. It is now at the police department, we've put some final touches on it, and then we'll be implementing it out into the community. So you'll start seeing the radar trailer. Slow down, please, observe the speed limit signs that are there, so that's what we're using it for. We also received another DUI grant this year, so we're going to have more DUI enforcement, including some checkpoints. There'll be one in early January. There'll be a press release that goes out that gives the specific time, not the location. With that, we did receive ninety seven new orange cones today, so they have our name on it, but the grants work. We're getting some grant funding to pay off for all this, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Lou?
Okay, again, normally I don't talk this much, but a couple things. As far as the audits, fourteen years, we've had clean audits, so we're keeping our city nice and straight, which is good. I tell you, it's so much easier when everything's right on the line. Secondly, treasurer's reports were recently completed, and they're in your inboxes for the month of October. Let's see, there's, oh, if you have any questions on any kind of financial nature, how the funds work, what we can use the money on, anything like that, feel free to give me a call. I'll talk about it more than you probably want to hear, but I'd be willing to answer any questions you guys got on it. And other than that, happy answer any questions you have.
Great job again, Lou, thank you, we appreciate you.
Thank you.
If you run on the financing. Thomas?
Good evening. As Michael said, thank you to Recreation and Public Works for doing such a great job on decorating throughout downtown and the plaza. You may have noticed there were some tree planting activities the past week. We had the California Conservation Corps in town, part of the CalFire grant for the Urban Forest Management Plan, included planting two hundred trees. As of about three thirty today, it was about a hundred and eighty seven trees, and they'll do a few more plantings in the morning tomorrow. And so I want to thank the California Conservation Corps for coming out. They're primarily a volunteer group, along with some paid supervising. And along with, special thanks to Public Works for helping them implement the trees. We, they kind of spread out throughout town, and you may see them nice, fresh trees and ground. If you have any questions or concerns with any of the trees, let me know. And then the news, the Newman Environment and Wetland System project is, we're in the planting, planting trees and shrubbery out there and working on irrigation. And that project's slowly coming to completion. And our McPike irrigation, a project out at the wastewater plant, is finalizing some of the work, the install work, and then we'll be doing the startup. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Just want to remind you, holiday safety. Please be aware, if you're working in a kitchen, have a working fire extinguisher, please check your smoke detectors. And then if you're going to use candles, recommend using LED style candles instead of burning wicks. Also, just want to let you know, we're going to be observing the winter break, just like City Hall, so fire administration will be closed, but your volunteers will be there to run calls if you need them. And I can answer any questions you guys might have.
Chief? Rowton?
Okay, I have to imitate my friend Leroy McDonald. And I'll do my very best. It's great to see all the young people here. You are the futures of our community, you are future leaders. Keep on fighting, keep on learning. God bless you. It's my best Leroy, that's all I got. Merry Christmas.
Councilman Pimentel?
Oh, I just want to look forward to working with everyone here. I grew up here in Newman, so I've been here forever and day, and I look forward to working with everyone here. I'm excited and nervous at the same time, so thank you.
Thank you.
Again, excited to be here, excited to serve the community and be a part of the community and be a voice for the community. So look forward to really bright next four years with this team. I'm excited, and again, thank you for blessing me with the opportunity.
I just want to say thank you, everybody, for coming out. It's nice to have a public here witnessing in this, and everybody have a Merry Christmas.
I have a handful of things. Ms. Moore, thank you for being our treasurer again. We thank you, your work with that. And congratulations to both you two, and welcome to the team. We look forward to working with you. The tree line went off great. Thanks for the community, for everybody that showed up out there, it was really nice, and thank you to all our city workers, the Chamber of Commerce, Ally, they all did a great job putting that together, so it was a successful event, and downtown looks amazing. With that, we have a mayor's meeting every month or thereabouts, where all the mayors from the San Slos County get together, we have dinner, and we can go from one town to town to town, so it's a different town every month. We talk, you know, about things that are going on in our cities and then go through things with each other. But the, the December one is always held in Newman, because all the mayors from all the town love coming to Newman because of all the lights and seeing everything and how pretty it is in our downtown. So it was held at the theater there, and it turned out outstanding. Again, thanks to Ally and, and the staff from the city that worked to put that together. It was a really good event, it was really beautiful. Leroy McDonald, Councilman McDonald, he was outstanding, we appreciate him being there. And going to miss him greatly. He was a great asset to our community and did a great job with us, so he'll be missed. For, for Pimentel and Haring, we have committees, if we can get the committees out, like maybe an email to them so that they can start looking at it, because we're going to have to do that in December or in January, correct? So we have a list of committees that we're all on, and those have, we generally split them up, some of them are bad, but if there's anything that interests you, you can start looking at those and go toward that. That's all I have. I want to say, everybody have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, but before we do that, we're going to, it's Mr. Holland's birthday, so we're going to sing him happy birthday.
How he turns red.
We want everybody to sing to him.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Michael. Happy birthday to you.
He read, he read it.
Happy, happy birthday, my... One last thing, I'd like to thank all the high school kids for coming out. I know it's, I mean, it's not the most exciting stuff if you don't fully understand it, but there is a lot of important stuff we cover here, and it's kind of neat to learn once you start getting in and getting your hands in it, and it's, it's interesting. So if you guys need signatures, come up and get them from us, for those that really need them, so... With that, I'll ask for adjournment.
A move we adjourn.
First, a second. Me to adjourn.